I will call this meeting to order. It is our regularly scheduled December 5th, 2024 City of Glenwood Springs City Council meeting. Thank you so much to all who are joining us. Um, we will go ahead and have the city clerk call roll.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mayor Wusa.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Dane.
Here.
Councillor Sims. Councillor Schacter.
Here.
Councillor Weimer.
Here.
Councillor Zalinski. Councillor Godis. We have a quorum.
Excellent. Um, are there any agenda changes or conflicts this evening? I see none. Um, any council announcements?
Um, I will give an announcement. Okay. Um, I want to bring up that we have a fourth annual holiday bazaar at the community center. Um, this, let's see, this Saturday, December 7th. It's 9:00 AM to noon and this, this year, we have a council chat. So there'll be counselors available. Sometimes we call it coffee and council, but there will be um, coffee and pastries available. So for those who are in the area or who want to come and visit with us one-on-one and don't like coming and standing at the podium, please come join us. Um, very good. Any others? I will close that. Um, I will move on to citizens appearing before council for items not on the agenda. This is for items obviously not on the agenda. I think we have one person here this evening for that. Um, but anyone else, no, so Ned Carter, you are first.
And.
Why, why thank you.
You can just let us know your name.
City.
Great.
Um, does that mean I can't come to the coffee thing since I like to come up here?
Nope, you're welcome.
Just, just wanted. This is National Fire Alarm Stand. I have been certified in the industry. And again, I come to you because the system in the holiday house is still in trouble. The fire marshal seems to not want to do anything. The HOA management seems not to want to do anything. I would like you to put this on the agenda so we can talk about in the future. Since according to Steve, it's not, I brought it up twice now and it's still not been addressed. I think it's necessary. It's a life safety issue. When City Market had a problem with their system, they had a 24-hour fire watch. We don't. Dan Chione is the manager of the property, as I understand. Currently with the smoke head down. Um. This is a text between us. How long do I have?
You got a minute and a half.
If you have a problem with one, with my tenants, please call me. Do not call the owner. It accomplishes nothing. Thank you. My reply, you didn't call me back. I had no choice. Just as you didn't answer my question if Crystal called you about the smoke detector and 202 having debate been taken down. I mentioned you tonight at city council still have the opportunity to reply. Uh, Crystal, uh, call you resmoke that or not. Uh, and I've been added, it has been two months or more, 202 Charlie's unit. No, it is not exclamation point. You are a troublemaker. Mind your own business. And other things back and forth. And they were polite, but this is someone that manages in the building who says I'm a troublemaker because life safety. There you go. It either means something or it doesn't. It'd be great if we didn't have to have a yearly inspection or the expensive system that Glenwood Springs demanded we put in. Eliminate them for everybody. Why don't you kill a few people? That's what the result would be. Remember the MGM Grand Hotel? That was incorrect wire. And simple as that. And you're allowing a rental unit to take down a detector head in a wood building. If it was metal, it would be one thing, but please let's put this on the agenda so we can have a real conversation about it.
Thank you for your comments, Ned. Um, any additional folks here to um, to make three minutes of concerns addressed with us? Okay, um, I am going to say that Ned, we do hear you and we certainly don't want any concerns or fatalities or fires. However, we do have protocol and so I'm not going to put this on the agenda. I'm, I'm gonna just be honest with that and I'm not gonna put it on the agenda. However, I will follow up through Steve Boyd and we will get some type of resolution. Do we have your email address? If not, let's make sure we have it. Um, and we will get you something and, and at that point, I think you'll have to simply um, accept our, our response and we'll have to move on from this. Okay? So thank you. I appreciate you coming here and thanks for bringing it to our attention.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Um, let's see here. Counsel response. Oh, I already did that. Um, yeah. Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. I didn't realize. Well, I didn't see it. I thought I already responded. Go ahead.
Ned, I'm gonna respond to you.
Ned, you get Counsel Godis as well.
Um, I'm not a very litigious guy, but I, I think your remedies, I don't really understand. Uh, I, I'm, I'm sorry. I don't really understand everything about what you're asking of us. But it really does seem like you have um, a issue with your property management company with your neighbors. And, and that remedy, I think, could, could be addressed by you seeking legal uh, representation and filing a lawsuit. And that, that, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm not an attorney certainly, so I'm not gonna do that. But I, I think that would get you more remedy potentially than having the city interject as an intercessor on your behalf, because I don't think that's a role we feel necessarily comfortable with. So again, I don't know a whole lot, uh, uh, the finer details of everything or what necessarily our role might be. Um, but I would just offer that to you as um, you know, an option. We have a great legal system um, for the time being. So, you know, use it.
Management company, we had a conversation today because it was leading that way.
Okay. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Ned, but we, you know, the, you know, protocol, we can't have a conversation back. I know. You guys are welcome to do it via email or you guys could go have coffee. Okay? Thank you so much. I, I think I just heard you wanted to do that. Okay, I'll bring it back to council. Um.
Uh, anytime. Give me an email.
Thank you. Um, so I'm gonna bring it back to council for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Okay, um, Counsel Dem.
Madam Mayor, if I may, I'd like to move that we approve tonight's consent agenda.
And a second?
I second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Um, and we now have the honor of doing a proclamation for Judge Mauer. So I'm gonna turn this on and I'm gonna get the right Mauer sister. I don't know if that's, what was your maiden? I want the right one. Don't be sneaking anything out of here. Okay, thank you.
I did it in grade school.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did you do that in grade school?
Only when answering the door for a moment. Am I coming up there?
Yes, please. Yeah, come on up. It's nice to see you.
Good to see you too.
Um, this is a proclamation honoring municipal court judge Amanda Mauer. Whereas Judge Amanda Mauer obtained her undergraduate degree in business administration in 1998 from Georgetown University. She graduated with honors from the Georgetown University Law School in May of 20, of 2001. And whereas she relocated from Washington DC in 2001 and initially practiced at Malcolm and Green PC and had a solo practice from 2004 to 2006. And whereas Judge Mauer spent 17 years with Waszewski. Thank you. Massey. Massey, thank you. And Mauer, those are things I should have practiced ahead of time. Um, and in order to focus her practice on comprehensive estate planning, probate business succession planning and real estate launched Amanda and Mauer Miller PC in November of 2023. Amanda opened a Grand Junction office in September of 2024 to serve clients in both Glenwood Springs and Grand Junction. And whereas Judge Mauer is a member of the Colorado Municipal Judges Association, the Colorado Bar Association, the Ninth Judicial District Bar Association, and the American Bar Association. And whereas Judge Mauer has served as the Glenwood Springs Municipal Court Associate Judge from 2007 and as the Glenwood Springs Municipal Court Judge from 2017. And whereas Judge Mauer has been pivotal in ensuring the administration of justice fairly, efficiently, and effectively while providing a professional, impartial, and cordial courtroom with court staff. Amanda has cultivated a strong court team and fostered a supportive and professional work environment during her tenure as municipal court judge. And whereas Judge Amanda Mauer has honorably performed her duties with unwavering dedication, professionalism, and excellence for 17 years with the city of Glenwood Springs. Therefore, be it resolved, I Ingrid Russo, Mayor of Glenwood Springs in the state of Colorado, do hereby recognize and express our sincere appreciation to Judge Amanda Mauer for her longstanding commitment to serving her community. I'm gonna go ahead and sign this, but I also wanted to say that you are not only a huge professional, but you're also a kind and compassionate person who has helped our kids for years with, with an awareness of the challenges of childhood and just a, a general respect. You have done so well and I thank you. I really do.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Yep. Take care.
I have written down some thank yous. I don't forget anybody. Um, thank you, Mayor Russo and all the members of council. I know most of you by now. And I also wanna thank Steve Boyd, who I think coordinated this proclamation. I really appreciate all of you and um, some of you have been on council for many years. And Steve Boyd has been here uh, the entire time I've been judge since 2017. And I'm not sure how long before that when I was assistant judge, but uh, you've really been a great. I know you're city manager now, but you were previously our main liaison between uh, the municipal court and the city, which I greatly appreciated. Along with Yvette, who has just been a tremendous help uh, with the municipal court. During the time that I uh, have served, I have felt each time I was appointed every two years that it was a privilege to serve the city and the residents of Glenwood Springs. I always strive to ensure that municipal defendants are educated about our judicial system and also receive due process under the law each case and are treated with respect in their interactions with the court. I have had a great team to help me achieve these goals. And so I want to thank my court administrator, Tim Mitchell, and past administrators Helen Smith, Nick Lapka, and Robin Bustad. Thank you to my court clerks Julie Shirley and past court clerk Wendy Batista, who's now with the PD. And also Ryan Muse for just a moment before he got recruited to be uh, city clerk. Uh, thank you to John Collins, who is an amazing city prosecutor and has been the entire time I've been serving for 17 years. Thank you to all of my Spanish interpreters, my current one, David Perez, and past interpreters Jerry Krebs and Elizabeth Velasco, who's now one of our uh, Colorado representatives. All of these people have been incremental um, in getting justice for all defendants and having them understand our system. Thank you to Citadel Security and for the city to be willing to hire Citadel to provide security every week in our court and transport defendants. In addition to the direct team and collaboration with other, there has been a lot of collaboration with other departments and agencies. And that's also been instrumental in running the court. Uh, first of all, I'd like to uh, thank Acting Police Chief Hassel, uh, Chief Daris. I'm not sure exactly who's the chief right now, but both of you have been really helpful and amazing to the court. I appreciate when you stop in, check in on us, and then just communicate whenever there's any issues that have come up. I also appreciate Lieutenant Kimmonaw and past Chief uh, Wilson greatly for all of the support with the court. Thank you to the Garfield County Sheriff, um, Valerio, and all of the Garfield County jail staff for continuing to house municipal defendants and also collaborating with the municipal court many times. Whenever an issue came up, they were always ready to uh, speak to us about it and reach a mutual resolution. Thank you to USO and all of the advocates who worked tirelessly to improve the lives of the juvenile defendants. USO is an amazing organization. I really appreciate that the city is willing to work um, with USO through the court. Thank you to the Valley Coalition to End Homelessness, which I've only recently learned about in the last couple of years, but they're really doing great things to minimize the number of people that don't have housing in our valley. And to help me better understand why certain people continue to um, be unhoused. Together, we weathered the planned bridge closure in 2017, the unexpected pandemic uh, in 2020, uh, the rash of bear-related tickets in 2024. uh, the rash of bear-related tickets in twenty twenty-four. Some things are expected, some things are not. Um, and everything in between, uh, whatever comes up. Finally, I wanna thank my husband Randy and my son Alex who's here, and I think my daughter's on, on the Zoom tonight, Ashley, for their patience and allowing me to review and sign dozens, if not hundreds, of warrants and probable cause to hold orders outside of regular business hours and also conduct advisements. Even when we were on vacation in national parks, we had to find the cell service or once we did one on the top of the Empire State Building in twenty seventeen. Uh, so we were always, they were always patient with me no matter what, when I had to uh, carry out these court duties. Last but not least, I'd like to thank my assistant judge Monica Groom. She's gonna continue as your assistant judge, and I know that you're in good hands with Judge Tim Graves, who's coming on with the city. Uh, so thank you all very, very much. Thank you. Miss you. Thank you.
Um, now we're gonna transition to our actions and or presentations. We are gonna start with the swearing in of Matthew Sims to the at-large counsel position. Our city clerk will do the honors. You guys need this?
All right. Repeat after me. I.
I.
Your name?
Matthew Sims.
Upon my oath.
Upon my oath.
Do solemnly swear that I will support.
Do solemnly swear that I will support.
The constitutions of the United States.
The constitutions of the United States.
The state of Colorado.
The state of Colorado.
And the charter and the ordinances of the city of Glenwood Springs.
And the charter and the ordinances of the city of Glenwood Springs.
And will faithfully execute the duties.
And will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the office of city councillor.
Of the office of city councillor.
Of the at-large ward upon which I am about to enter.
Of the at-large ward which I'm about to enter.
Thank you. You sign right there? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Not come back around the other side.
Yeah.
Okay. There we go. Okay, excellent. Now we are a full council again. We'll go ahead and begin item number nine, which is our West Mountain Regional Housing Coalition.
Hi, everyone. Thank you, mayor and council for allowing me to update you tonight. I'm April Long. I'm the executive director of the West Mountain Regional Housing Coalition, of which the city of Glenwood Springs is a member, participating member Hannah Cosman is your representative, Shelley Cop previously represented Rafa on our board. And I am here to provide you with an update on the program. These are the members of our organization. As a reminder, we're a regional organization. So we're serving Pittkin, Garfield Counties, and the portion of Eagle County in the Roaring Fork Valley. I'll go quickly through most of this so that we can get to the good stuff. Um, our mission is to increase the availability and attainability of affordable housing for our workforce in our region. We believe the best way to do that is to do it collaboratively, using all of the skills and resources of our communities. Um, we have some strategies that we are um, implementing now and intending to implement in the future because we're a brand new organization. We just were established as a five oh one C three in twenty twenty-two. Um, but most important for tonight is this development neutral piece of it. So that is um, the strategy that we're pursuing with this homeownership and good deeds program, where we are trying to acquire free market housing and bring it off of the free market into the affordable market without building anything new. As a reminder, we have some severe housing issues in this region um, in the, in the realm of affordability. I'm gonna go quickly through this, but I'm happy to go back because I presented this information to you all in the summer. But the median income for a family of three in our region ranges between ninety and a hundred and ten thousand dollars a year. Um, that means that if you use the typical, the standard um, calculation for housing affordability, you shouldn't be spending more than thirty percent of your um, income on housing. So to give you those numbers, if you are uh, earning the average annual income, you could afford about a three hundred thousand dollar home. Um, three hundred percent of that income of the average income would get you almost a million dollar home. And so just a reminder of what that looks like for our region. In Garfield County, in twenty twenty-three, the median sell price was eight hundred and eighty-five thousand. In Pittkin County, it was seven point eight million. So completely out of reach for all of our working locals um, to afford home, homeownership at this point. So our organization, the West Mountain Regional Housing Coalition, introduced a good deeds program um, in uh, the, starting in August of this year, and I'm uh, here to update you on that program. As a reminder, we're trying to convert free market homes. We do this by providing thirty percent of the purchase price at closing. And the working local, the buyer, has to provide seventy percent of that price. So we're buying down the price of the house um, to a seventy percent point. And we have very few requirements for our program to be qualified in it and to maintain qualification. You have to use this home, this free market home that we're helping you purchase as your primary residence. You can never short-term rent it. You have to maintain local employment. However, your employment can change. You can change from working in Pittkin County to Garfield County without losing your housing. You can own no other residential property anywhere. You have to agree to a three percent annual appreciation on um, the, or the increasing price of the house. So when you go to resell the house, you only can resell it for three percent annually. And then we do have some allowances for some capital improvements to that maximum resale price. So what I'm here to do tonight is provide you with an update of how well this program has gone, and it's very exciting news. Um, we called this a pilot program. Um, we started with two million dollars. You can see our contributors there. Thank you very much, Glenwood Springs, for helping us get this program rolling. We estimated that with two million dollars, we would be able to do about five to ten new deed restricted homes. Not new homes, new to the program homes. And so we have seen success, tremendous success. In just four months, we have deed restricted seven free market homes in the region. Um, we are going to deed restrict one more. I just um, got under contract on another house yesterday. So one more before the end of the year, we will have eight homes. We have spent one point eight million, but by the end of the year, we will have spent all two million. Um, and those homes, to kind of break it down, you know, we're housing eleven working locals in now secure homeownership. Um, so that's incredible. Those working locals also have the opportunity to rent to other working locals. And so there are two people, two of those families that will be renting. Um, and one of those employees freed up their own affordable housing. They moved from affordable housing into a, into a homeownership situation. So they freed up another affordable housing unit for another working local. And four out of five of the ones working in Glenwood Springs, I'm gonna show you where everybody's located in just a second, but four out of the five workers are in Glenwood Springs. They're now within walking or backing distance of their jobs and their kids' schools. So incredible improvements, not just in securing homeownership, sustaining our local workforce, but and also in reduction of commuter traffic. So getting into the details in case you want to, and this is a busy slide, but I'll explain it pretty quickly. Um, all of the ones in the green in the back, those are the prices of the homes that we helped purchase. Those are the free market prices. So ranging from about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars to one point two million dollars. We do have a maximum price that we'll purchase at, and it is one point two million in the Carbondale area. We'll go up to one point five million in Basalt and Aspen, but none of the, we didn't buy any homes in that area. Um, the blue is what we paid, what West Mountain Regional Housing Coalition paid to buy the deed restriction. And then the orange price is what the buyer paid. And one of the important pieces of that orange price, that's now the maximum resale price of that house. If they all go to sell it tomorrow, that's the new resale price. So seven new affordable homes in our area, more affordable homes. Um, the average purchase price there was about eight hundred and seventy-five thousand. That'll change a little bit with this extra contract that we're just under. Um, the average buyer price was about six hundred thousand, and the average um, coalition price that we paid was about two hundred and sixty-two thousand per purchase. So if we look at that in terms of total volume, in case that's interesting to you, we um, just, we just, you know, helped this community secure um, six million dollars worth of home value um, from outside investors to local workforce. Um, again, twenty-two bedrooms and um, the average price per bedroom was about eighty-three thousand. As you all know, the cost of building um, affordable housing in this area is anywhere from about eight hundred thousand to one point two million dollars a unit, which is usually a two-bedroom unit. Okay, so let's look at who we bought houses with. Um, so eleven local workers. Um, the red indicates where the homes are. So three of those homes were in Carbondale. Four of the homes are in the town, are in the city of Glenwood Springs, city limits. Uh, Smiley Faces is where everybody works, in case you're interested in where these people are going. Um, five of which are, or four of which work in the city of Glenwood Springs, as I mentioned, two in Carbondale, one in Basalt, and four in the Aspen area. We are um, as expected, sustaining a really important piece of our workforce everywhere from medical employees, our medical personnel, um, school district, um, administrative, all the way to the administrative level, um, servers in some of your favorite restaurants, ski patrollers, bike mechanics, um, local nonprofits and local government staff. So um, I think that when we were setting this program up, I got a lot of questions about, you know, who would even participate in this program? So I'm really excited to be able to share with you all that it might be people you know. Um, and so other benefits of the good deeds program that we did not even anticipate. But um, there are, actually, there are seven first-time home buyers. So that number has changed just a little bit. Seven first-time home buyers, um, eight of those buyers are moving out of rentals. So one of the um, important strategies about doing a homeownership program for our coalition was that to help move the cogs. If we can get people into homeownership that should be in homeownership, instead of being in rentals, then they can stop paying the high price of rentals that is driving the rental market a little crazy. So starting to grease the wheels and move people into homeownership, move them out of rentals so that lower-income earners who can only afford rentals can get into rentals. Um, interestingly, the thirty percent that we're coming to the closing table with, it doesn't go to the buyer. So it's not income to the buyer. It just goes to closing the deal. The lenders for our buyers are seeing that as a thirty percent down payment. And so the buyers are getting really great interest rate. I mean, as great as you can get right now, but they're getting a great interest rate. Um, some of our buyers are beating out cash offers from investors. So we're keeping this again, out of the hands of people who do not earn an income or contribute to this community. And uh, we estimate the savings of about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars for our local employers. If you know anything about what it costs to train and, and recruit a new employee to replace a position, it's about fifty thousand dollars per employee. I think that some of the really incredible pieces of this has been the um, sincere appreciation and gratitude um, that these local workers um, want to express to us, the coalition, and, and also to you all as funders of this program. Um, it has been amazing, the type of help that we've, that we've been given um, and that they have needed. And so I just wanted to share a few pieces of that with you all. Um, I'll share this presentation with you so you can read some more of these quotes, but it's been really inspiring, really heartwarming um, to know who we're helping and how much it means to them to be able to stay in these communities. So there's our, some of our happy new homeowners. Um, and it has, like I said, just been really incredible to see these people um, move through this really, really easily and really happily, really gratefully. This is one particular situation that we're pretty proud of. Um, this woman lives in Rifle. Um, unfortunately, she has been renting on a month-to-month basis in subpar situation, you know, um, and has had, you know, a pretty difficult time in her family life. And this has given her the opportunity to move into Glenwood Springs, next door to her son's school, where he can have his own bedroom. Um, and they can, you know, move into home, secure homeownership, stable, stable foundation that we all want for our families and for our kids, certainly. And she um, you know, also interestingly is a grant writer for CMC. And she's helping CMC get their grants to build their own affordable housing. One of our local architects um, is in this program. They design and uh, they design the local affordable housing projects that some of you are familiar with. So it is a nice um, cyclical pay-it-forward opportunity for people. Okay, so um, we're at the end of the program. We've spent two million dollars. Um, we have still ten qualified households that are currently shopping for housing. They're gonna have to stop after I tell them there's no more funding tomorrow. Um, but there are ten qualified households. There are hundreds of people who have applications in their hands just waiting until we get additional funding to see if they could also participate in the program. I get about one new interest or request for an application every day. And so the next steps for this program, like I mentioned, it's a pilot program. We wanted to make sure that we had a good proof of concept moving forward before we moved forward, and we do feel like we do. So our board is committed to um, continuing to support this program, grow this program, offer this program through our region. We know that funding is this linchpin piece of it. Um, we believe that we are gonna go back to the state and the federal government to see if we can get some grants. Um, they were also interested in what this program looks like. It's pretty different and new for them. And so we are gonna spend the next year seeking state and federal support, um, continuing to seek support from our local governments and um, our businesses and employers. You know, this can't fall on the backs of any one business or employer to retain all of their employees or all that their employees need. And so we have interest from them. Um, we're also continuing and, and really striving hard to get um, some philanthropic support for this organization, for, for the good deeds program. That's it. I'd be happy to take any questions, but thank you so much for participating, for contributing to this program.
Thank you. Um, do I have any questions from council or even comments at this? Okay, Counsel Zalinski.
I just wanna say congratulations. I think that's, I mean, that's such a coup. And I'm not, I had no doubt that it was gonna be a popular program, but the level of success that you've attained so quickly is kinda dazzling. So congratulations to you and your team and everybody involved.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate it. Um, anyone else? And do we have any comments from the public? Anyone online? Doesn't look like it. Well, April, thank you. You guys, it's, it's really empowering to see an idea come to fruition and be so successful. So thank you for all your efforts and your, your board, everybody. We really appreciate it. So thank you. It's fun to see that outcome.
Isn't it?
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Good night. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
You're doing a great job.
Thank you. Uh, have a great board.
Yeah, that's awesome. Okay, um, we will move on to the Uenta Railroad update. I think our city attorney, Carl Hamlin.
I'm gonna do it so that I don't have to keep pushing my button. I did not do a PowerPoint for you because I know you see a lot of PowerPoints. Um, as you guys know, um, you've been deeply involved in this, but for the public's benefit, um, City Glenwood Springs has been participating in opposition to um, the Uenta Railline uh, project, which would bring hundreds of um, heavy crude, waxy crude cars, um, rail cars down through the Glenwood Canyon, next to the Colorado River, most of the way along the Colorado River until it exited out, going onto the Front Range and then down to the Gulf um, to be processed. The STB uh, is in charge of making the determinations on whether that is okay or not. They conducted an EIS, which was very limited in scope and left out a lot of the potential damage that could be done uh, while acknowledging that there would be regular accidents and spills as a result um, of this, of this train. They didn't take into account any of those impacts that would have occurred, say, if one of those, you know, cars derailed in the Glenwood Canyon in the Colorado River, serving most of the western United States drinking water. Uh, Glenwood worked first on the political side with Senator Bennett's office in particular, as well as Hickenlooper's office um, to try to provide support for the opposition uh, for that decision. Ultimately, Eagle County um, sued on behalf of Eagle County. Um, the uh, STB and the, what's called the Seven Counties Coalition uh, out of Utah around this. That case um, went up from the trial court, went to the DC Court of Appeals. At that point, you all decided that you would jump in and fund an amicus brief, and we put together a coalition. of local governments to show our support and filed an amicus brief in the D.C. Court of Appeals. That amicus brief at the D.C. Court of Appeals was adopted almost in total by the D.C. Circuit, frankly. In terms of the arguments we made, the observations about NEPA, in this case, to back up a little bit, revolves very much around the application of the National Environmental Policy Act, NEPA, and how it relates to us as local governments and our ability to impact these large federal projects and the requirement that they talk to us about what is happening and what could happen to our communities. So very successful at the D.C. Circuit Court of Appeals. It went up to the U.S. Supreme Court on appeal, and it will be heard for oral argument on December thirteenth. And as you know, the current U.S. Supreme Court is very conservative with regard to these large pieces of policy legislation. And so you again ask that we put together a coalition, file a brief in front of the U.S. Supreme Court, which, you know, fun binding. This is what it looks like. If you guys wanna take a look, it's kinda fun.
Oh, will you pass that down?
Yeah. Because it is, it's a lot of, it's a lot of fun. If you look at the back pages, it's all of the various, various entities that have participated and, and the attorneys representing them, that kind of thing. And so it's kind of a fun thing.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's a great thing that Glenwood put that together. Let's be honest, our likelihood of success is extremely low at the U.S. Supreme Court. We have focused in this brief primarily on the impacts to local governments and the importance of the process that NEPA provides us to be able to discuss and argue and mitigate potential risks of large projects. And I think it's important to look at the successes that we have had as local governments in Colorado and a couple that are, that are really huge. One is Grand County and the Moffett Ferman Project. Wherein, Grand County would not have had a voice in that project but for NEPA. And so Grand County, which is one of our more conservative counties you would think of, also joined this brief, and their commissioners voted unanimously to be on this brief with us. And so it, it really is reflective that this is not a partisan issue. This is a local issue. And how do we make ourselves heard when we're having things sort of done to us by these large projects that are being approved at the federal level? And certainly, you only need to look up the hill to know how important our participation in federal permitting processes are moving forward. We had really hoped that Justice Gorsuch, being a Colorado resident, would be somebody who would be swayed by our arguments around what it has meant for Colorado. And unfortunately, we found out today that he will be recusing himself on this case because of his relationship with the Ann Sheets family over the years. I would note that he seems to be the only U.S. Supreme Court justice who has recused themselves because of their relationship with anybody. For whatever it's worth, I think that speaks highly of both Gorsuch and also a disappointment that he stepped off on this case because it was really, truly our hope that he would be one of those justices that would understand the importance. He's from the West. He has seen this applied over and over again. And so he was a, you know, he was kind of one of those people we were really trying to speak to. Anyway, with all of that having been said, that's where we're at. It's argued, it's going to be argued on the thirteenth. I want to, in particular, express gratitude to my partner, Richard Peterson Premer, who has really done the work of organizing and getting this put together along with the primary drafters, Bill Eubanks primarily on the, on the brief. And I wanna thank you guys because it is very forward-thinking of you to organize this, to be the leaders once again. I mean, it started back with the CRCA, with the Colorado River Cooperative Agreement, and this body being the leader, and making sure the middle river was represented. And this is a continuation of that kind of leadership on the West Slope. And so I really wanted to say thank you. Hopefully, the paper picks this up. It's a hugely important story. It impacts literally millions of lives. And I don't know that it's getting kind of the coverage and the, and the churn right now of what's going on. A lot of interest in other things going on in the country, but this is a big one, and it's gonna be very meaningful for us at the local level if we lose a lot of these protections that are provided by NEPA to us. So with that, happy to answer any questions.
Have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any questions from the community? Any comments? Anyone online? I just wanna say thank you. Thank you to you, to Richard, to the firm, and also to the other communities who also joined in this. And I think it's so important for us to recognize that we are stronger when we unite and when we see a common cause and collectively come together to say, regardless of politics, and maybe where we historically align, there are some things that are just good for western Colorado. And this was good for western Colorado. So, you know, I'm, I'm still optimistic and I hope, I hope there's, there's success. Thank you. Yeah. We will move on. We are now on to item number eleven. This is Resolution twenty-two-four dash thirty-eight, Adoption of the Strategic Communications Plan. Hello.
Good evening, Mayor members of council. My name is Breanna Starbuck. I am your humble Public Information Officer. And with me tonight, I have Kristin Noel, Kristin Noel with Lake Communications. For a little bit of background, just to recap, what is this? Why are we doing it? This is our strategic communications plan that we are putting before you tonight. We're really excited to have it in front of you. And essentially, this is how our strategy for, we want you to communicate better. And what does that mean? We wanna be more efficient and more effective when we're trying to communicate with our various audiences. So as we look about this plan, the purpose of it is for us to actually identify those goals, think about those actionable steps for us to put in there, empower our staff to have some of that guidance for, you know, whether there's someone who are really experienced with communicating with folks or if they're newer to that arena, for them to have that guidance in there, documenting these processes for your communication and engagement office, and as well put in, put into place some metrics for success. It's really important to, as we expand our communications program, so that we're able to better meet those needs of transparency and communication, given all the different ways that folks are communicating these ways. So we're committed, committing to doing better. We want to do better, and here's how we are hoping to accomplish that. With that, I'm gonna turn it over to Kristin to walk through some of the meat of the, the plan, and then we'll open it up for questions.
You want me to cover goals too, or skip over them? All right. Good evening, council. Thank you for having us. As Bree said, we're excited to present this plan. This really was a collaborative effort. And I do want to just mention that Malita Palowski, my coworker, is online via Zoom this evening as well. So she's, she'll, she's waving remotely. But again, part of this plan really was developed based on conversations with, with each of you, talking to staff, really understanding how the communications office operates here in Glenwood Springs. And the, this plan, which is a forty-six-page document, is really meant to be kind of a roadmap and provide some actionable steps on how to communicate more effectively in Glenwood Springs with Glenwood Springs in mind. This is really for you, for your community, and for this organization. So the goals are really to align with the work that you're doing, the work that staff is doing, and to help strengthen just overall community trust in what this strong organization is already doing, but tell the city's story a little bit better. One, we're going through, like I said, this document is forty-six pages, and you can read it on your own. One of the things that I wanted to include in this presentation are these foundational principles. And why we include these are really your city why, you know, and we want to be able to communicate these principles in outreach and communication efforts out to the community. So throughout future communication efforts, these principles and some of the, there are sub-values, kind of key words, that should be utilized or at least thought of as city staff starts to develop communication to put out to the community. We, we want the community to know and understand that Glenwood Springs as an organization is approachable and open to receiving feedback, that we're being proactive and transparent in our communication, that we value diversity and seek opportunities for all sorts of input and perspectives. Also, that the city is strategic about the decisions that it makes and being thoughtful about long-term planning initiatives. So bringing community members along throughout an entire planning process or project, and that you're collaborative with community partners. We heard that in some of the conversations we had with stakeholders, that you do work well together with other organizations, and we wanna highlight that. This slide about communication priorities is, dispels about six pages down into five bullet points. But what we like to build into a plan are, you know, kind of these five key top goals that we hope the actionable steps under each of these goals will accomplish. So within the plan, under each of these five priorities are additional steps and specific things that staff is committed to doing to help improve communication. I'll mention that this plan is really meant to be a living document, and we know that in the real world that priorities change, projects change, staff changes. There are a lot of unknowns, and this plan is meant to be flexible enough to accommodate those changes. But we wanna keep a lot of these kind of top-level priorities in mind, and those actionable steps can always be moved up or moved down on the priority list throughout the year, you know, as, as needed. But, you know, one of the main priorities really is to equip all staff to help support communication efforts. There are lots of divisions, department members that communicate in sometimes less formal ways, but they are spokespeople for the organization and can help tell the city's story. We wanna continue to provide that open, timely and accessible communication to, to all audiences. Again, help increase trust in city council and city staff, continue to tell the city's story, and really build that robust public participation and civic engagement approach. So this last slide is really meant to just show you that in addition to these actionable steps in the plan, we like to build in toolkit items. This plan is meant to be, you know, kind of a guiding document for Bree, but also for the organization as a whole. And there are staff members at various levels of communication, you know, understanding. And we don't want this to be a burden on, on staff. It's meant to be a tool that they can use when they are communicating, whether it be a land use project or a public safety initiative. So these toolkit items are meant to be a quick reference, something that they can use and pull out. We have an, the International Association of Public Participation has a well-known chart of kind of the levels of public engagement, and it's nice to have an understanding of what that looks like when developing an engagement plan. We have some social media best practices. We've developed a communications matrix, which includes all of the communication tools that the city currently uses and the audiences that it is most effective in reaching. So it's kind of this chart that you can use of what tool am I looking at using and who is my audience, and would this be the most effective tool to use? It's really helpful. We also have some ways that we're gonna measure success and prioritize the work that, that communications will do over the next year. So all of those pieces, again, are meant to be just a resource for, for staff to utilize as needed.
And with that, I just wanted to add here on the end, before we jump into questions, that I wanna reassure everyone that we have heard the feedback, and we are really wanting to make sure that we're implementing a smart and sustainable communication program and strategy so that we can reach people more effectively, more efficiently. There are infinite tools and ideas and tactics out there, and part of this plan was just getting them down on paper. As always, we welcome additional feedback, and this is a living document. So we look forward to implementing this into the year ahead and beyond. And with that, I'll turn it over to questions.
That's awesome. Any questions? Well, I will, I will just add that you guys have helped us prepare two articles for the paper. One, I was able to write an article with your help on the budget. Actually, I should say, you guys wrote the article concurrently with us, and it was a team effort. And it was, you know, really eye-opening and helpful and educational and accurate. So the only feedback I received on it was super positive, and people, you know, commented on how helpful it was in understanding difficult, complex, you know, budgetary issues. In addition, you helped Aaron Zalinski, author an article that I think was also, also well-received. Go ahead, Aaron.
Yeah, and I would just say the same. Like, I, not only did I get, you know, like, oh, that was a great article. I got engagement from it. I had people reaching out to me, you know, specifically with like, how do I get involved? Like, so it served its purpose. And I feel like, you know, just like, be these steps. We're moving in the right direction. So, you know, truly, truly appreciate the impact that you're having already, and we're just kinda scratching the surface. You're just really helping me do a better job at what I'm doing, and I appreciate, you know, I've always thought, Bree, that you crush it. But it's a lot. And so this is to, you know, see more tools and more opportunities for us to really, truly bring our community together. Communication, I think, is our greatest asset. So thank you for that.
Yeah, I think that's one of the, the number-one things we hear from people is that having them understand what happens here at City Hall is really, really important. And I think that when we don't have that, that's when people start to question just intent or anything like that. So I really, I appreciate it. I appreciate what you guys have done, and it, you are very good at it. So thank you.
Well, thank you. That's wonderful feedback, and it's great to hear. And as you hear those things, please share it and, and vice versa, if there's things that aren't going well. That, those are the, the metrics that we want to continue to do the things that are working.
Yeah.
And focus on that and, yeah, continue to move forward.
Thank you. And Brianna, thank you. It seems like you guys have a good working relationship, and we're glad it's a good fit. So thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, council.
Okay. Have a great night, and thanks for coming into town for this. Yeah, you're getting pretty familiar with that.
Sure am, yeah. Doesn't hurt that it's a beautiful drive. It was great.
Really quickly, before you guys go though, I will open it up to comments to see if anybody has any questions or comments this evening. Yeah, come on up. Yeah.
I just have a quick question.
Come on up, Meryl, and I do need you at the podium because it's a, a recorded meeting. So I do need to have you come up, say your name. We're gonna make it super official. Say your name, and if you live in city limits.
Meryl Lickman, and I do live in city limits, and this is one of my areas of expertise. And I have a question about your crisis communication plan, and just to talk about it. I just, I'm just curious because a crisis is a very special time for a communications team, and I thought that would be interesting.
Yeah, perfect. I will let Brianna jump back into that one.
Yeah, great question. Meryl, I'm gonna face this way. I know that I'm thinking of you over there. So question about our crisis communication plan, which I know is something that's been a really hot topic or important topic for our community over the, especially over the last few years, but all the time. And first of all, I just wanna say that the crisis communication plan is part of something that we practice with all sorts of things for incident command, management and response. And that is part of the, the emergency infrastructure that we put into place. We've got several emergency response plans that speak to the communications aspect. Something that is identified in the action plan for this is to add a little bit of detail that goes into more specifics for additional steps that we would like to take with communications when there are emergencies. Because different incidents require different approaches, and while it's important, it's impossible to articulate every detail for every incident, just expanding out a little bit more what the general public can expect from communications, as well as give guidance for folks who may be communicating during an emergency incident. Generally, I would say the most important thing for emergency communications is to make sure that folks are tuned in to our emergency communications system ran by Gar Code nine-one-one. So garcode nine-one-one dot com. Make sure you're tuned in there. And then in terms of our approach to emergency communications, that's something that after any incident, that, that incident response team is reviewing all things after action review, and communications is a big part of that. And so it's definitely something that we think a lot about. I know that myself, as well as a number of other staff, have quite a bit of training in incident communications, and that's something that is always top of mind when I think about communications.
Excellent. Thank you so much. We so appreciate it. Excellent. Thank you so much. We so appreciate it. Yeah, hopefully you're saying you're gonna stay here this evening. You don't. Okay, thank you. Thank you both. Okay, great. We will move on then. We, this is a resolution, actually. So I'm gonna bring it back to council for a motion. Counselor Zalinski.
I move to approve Resolution twenty twenty four dash thirty eight, the adoption of our strategic communication plan.
Okay, and do I have a second? Counselor Wymer.
I will enthusiastically second that.
Great. I have a motion and a second. Would you like to call the question, please?
Counselor Sims.
You're cool. We can do both. We could just.
It's unanimous.
Okay, cool. Thank you. Effortless. Ryan Gordon at the podium.
Hello, City Council Ryan Gordon, your city engineer. Before I jump into the South Bridge update, one other piece of information is an update. So Block forty four, so this is the alleyway behind Springs and and docks is a continuation of project we started earlier this year. We're actually starting the next phase, starting on Monday. So good construction will be doing and replacing the gas line from the east-west alleyway back to Eighth Street. Just wanted to guys let you know, the east-east west alleyway, which connects, let's say, the Wing Street in Bethel Plaza to Cooper will be still open. Certainly for the holiday season and and throughout this first phase, they're not working through the the Christmas week. Just wanted to let you guys know a heads up that's happening. We had a great public meeting last week with all the business owners and been coordinating with them. So things should go smoothly, but you'll probably see some construction and some minor disruption. But that's what's going on downtown. Okay, on to South Bridge. So not a whole lot going on. One of the big things we've done is we are tweaking and refining the design as we're going along. The one big piece is at the runway below the runway. As you recall, we got rid of the tunnel. We have worked with our consultant and we've worked with the airport. And we actually are gonna raise the road up a couple feet to optimize that. That's gonna reduce the amount of excavation, reduce the amount of walls. And then really importantly for the airport, it gives them back a lot of more usable real estate that they can use for their mechanic shop and and wherever else they think they can use. So real big positives there. We did get our fifty percent cost estimate and and design from Jacobs a couple weeks ago. Maybe about a month ago, and we've reviewed that and sent comments back. We will be scheduling a workshop with you folks so we can go over what we're seeing, what we're seeing in costs, how we're looking at the funding side of things. So I think beginning of next year, we'll see that and we can really sit down and dive into the details. So with that, that's 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 my my update for for this time. Happy to field some questions.
Great. I'll have it. First, we'll start with council questions. Counselor Gottes.
What is the cost of fifty percent?
The cost of fifty percent before we got in the details was in that mid eighties range that we expected. Again, we can go in the details at another time. We're still playing with some ideas. You know, we met with CDOT a couple weeks ago to talk about some scope items. We thought we could scale down. They're reviewing those. We're anticipating a response back in the next week or two. And then the the changes that I just mentioned, raising the road up should have a good significant positive impact on the costs as well. So we're trending that mid eighties eighty million.
And we've been in that range. Eighty to ninety for almost a year now. So this is not outside. This is not grossly outside of the scope of we're hoping as we were knocking things off the big list.
I would say we're trending the right direction. I think one of the great things that we've recognized from this effort is our initial revised cost from a year ago has been validated. You know, we took big swipes and big chunks as, hey, if we pluck off this huge piece, we hope to drop it by a big, a big amount. Now that we've gotten a little more of the details, it's great to see that those assumptions have been confirmed.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? We'll open it up to public questions then. Did you guys want to come up with any questions or? Okay, oh. You have a slideshow. Sweet, okay.
Oh, it's going, it's going.
First of all, Mr. Honorable Mayor, council members, thank you for entertaining my
Your name and
Oh, right.
Sorry.
Merrill Glickman. I live in city limits. I just wanted to thank you all for entertaining my comments. One of the things I recognized from pursuing this South Bridge project and giving the input of Cardiff Glen is that I was looking back at all the research and all the things that have been done. And South Bridge has a long history and the engineering department has turned over, the council has turned over. And sometimes things get lost. So thank you for letting me present things that have occurred in the past that the council may not know about simply. I heard I watched, I don't know how you say his name, Huner. Last last time, come up and talk about Midland as an alternative to eighty-two. And I didn't know that. That was in the seventies. So and then I wanted to just remind the council again that when South Bridge was being thought about and was twenty-seventh street was being thought about. There was a decision between two lanes and four to five lanes, and they went with two lanes. And if you look at the, how do I just move this now? Oh no, precious time. How do I get to the next slide, please? So if you look at it, this was the decision.
Power.
Okay. I'm losing time. So anyway.
You know what? We'll we'll give you an extra thirty seconds. No worry. It'll be a technical, even I would even indulge and give you a minute. Now you're good. Yeah, we might have to. We've done that before. No version to that.
So so if it wasn't built, this was gonna be very costly to the community. And so I just wanted to remind you of that, that I just think we've talked about, I've talked about the history of access. And whether it's an access road or you know what? I just think in all honesty, it's really obvious that people are gonna use it unless we do something like a toll bridge. So question number one is, what is the status of that? I actually thought that was a good idea. I thought I had spoken to the previous a long time ago. And that had been discussed. And I thought it was they didn't find it financially feasible. So I would like to know about that. And I think it would be a great idea because I think to me and to everyone I speak to, I gave you all the numbers. I gave you all the stats, why I think there is gonna be a ton of traffic, like eight thousand people going by a day minimum. I really think we need to mitigate it and we can do everything, you know, but I would like to know what happened with the Jacobs survey. Because that was supposed to be a redo of the study. Because I actually believe there's more traffic than we thought. After I heard Huner talk, I realized that I didn't know about that piece, that it was an alternative. So there'll actually be, I think, more traffic. What else? I just wanted to say that if a seat out wall is required, that I want to make sure we let our people know when we're surveying that I have spoken to CDOT because I was curious and asked them, and they said it doesn't have to be a twelve-foot wall on a berm and all that. It can be what we want and that it could be discussed. And if we surveyed them and they know that, I think last time it was a majority by a smidge that it got, that they passed it. But I think if they knew it was for privacy, I think they would, I think they would go for it. And so I just want the best for the community. I want the bridge to happen. And I think that was all my questions. So thank you. And I'm twenty-seven seconds.
Oh, are you sure? Yeah, you don't wanna just hang out for a minute?
Yeah, I do. So thank you all for all your contributions. I've been a pain in the neck for the last year.
He's been lovely. So, yeah, you've been lovely. And thank you.
Those are my questions, but thank you, Brian especially.
Thanks, Meryl. I think the reality is, and to Meryl's point, is that there, this is a this is a project that's long been in the works. And it's, you know, the impetus for it and how we, how we've come to this place has a storied past. So Meryl, if you miss something, your husband can come up and talk about it. If you want him to, we'll we'll make that exception. So.
No, just tell me.
I enjoy just watching your report. If you can tell, tell us your name and if you live in city limits. I'm, we're gonna keep going. Okay.
I'm Mark Glickman. I'm Merrill's husband. And as you can imagine, living with Merrill, I've been intimately involved in this South you know, scenario. The the part that Merrill wanted to, she ran out of time on. And it had to do with funding. She has looked at all sorts of options with funding, the slide. And we have a, we did print off a copy for everybody.
Thank you.
Have a paper copy. But there's a lot of things, you can see a little history that Merrill's put together for it. And if you look under the twenty twenty-five, that's kind of some other possibilities that I guess we we don't know where they stand at this point. And and we just like to make sure that all possibilities for funding are considered. And if anybody can't address maybe current status of any of those other possibilities, that would be interesting to know. The other thing I wanted to say, Merrill did allude to a few minutes ago. And this is something that Congressman Gottes mentioned in a previous city council meeting. At which I think is a fantastic idea, is the toll road. Make it partially a toll road, whether it's the bridge or all of it. There's also obviously a waiver for those of us who have no choice. We have to go that, you know, that way. But for the general public having some aspect of a of a toll, I think would solve a lot of problems and create some additional revenue and all of that. So anyway, again, thank you to city council for entertaining the dynamic duel here, you know.
You guys make a great team.
I'm sorry.
I appreciate your energy.
Yeah.
And I didn't use my whole three minutes.
No, you didn't. You can stay up and talk to us more about anything you'd like. Okay, thank you. Okay, perfect. Thank you both. I appreciate it. Is there anyone else here to discuss South Bridge? Anyone online wanting to discuss South Bridge this evening? Okay, I'm gonna close the public comment section. Ryan, do you want to address anything that came up on that?
Yeah, I mean, I think I can give a few quick updates to to kind of fill in with the missing pieces. So I haven't seen your your funding document. So I I can't quite speak to that. Would be great to have it to look at and we can look at and and address that at at another time. You know, so so a couple of things. Thank you, Mark. I really appreciate that. Just just real quick. Merrill and Mark are exactly correct, right? We have a sound wall reevaluation that's going on as part of our NEPA process in the environmental documents. Those are still on schedule to be completed later in the spring. And and will help direct where we're going with if a sound wall is needed, what it looks like or what comes in afterwards if if it's not there. So and I I would definitely say that, you know, we are definitely, you know, committed to doing what we can do for for Cardiff Glen, no sound walls, some sort of barrier vegetation, right? We have lots of ideas that we have plugged into that, into the estimate. And so, you know, Counselor Gottes did mention a toll last time. So we've been working on a concept of a toll for about nine months now. And so certainly as we have our next work session, there'll definitely be some items that we want to present to you and show where we are on that and the progress and some of the different options. So it is definitely something that we've been looking for a while and we appreciate everybody's interest in it because it is an interesting option.
Thank you, Ryan. Appreciate it. I have a few questions, I think. Counselor Gottes.
Right, we have, and this is old Terry parched data, but and so, you know, forgive me, and if you don't know the answer, that's fine. We have, we had air sage data, destination or or origin destination studies. That, what did it say? I'm not, I I feel like I know what it said, but do you remember what it said on? If we didn't have a toll road, what to what degree would this South Bridge act as a bypass? Rather than local traffic coming down Four Mile and taking congestion out of South Glenwood Up Valley? Do you, do you have any of that information? Because we, we've done that study. I mean, there was anticipated traffic counts as part of the NEPA originally, was there not?
Yes, there was. It's part of the NEPA process, which started back in two thousand and eight. There was traffic that he started. And we have since updated that for the current current version. I know that we did some of that origination and destination analysis. I didn't know that it was part of looking at South Bridge. So let me dig into that and see what we have.
Yeah, I I think, and also, when when is that, you know, you talked about a work session where you're gonna talk about the costs and and all that? Do we know when that work session is? Do we have it scheduled yet?
I I think we have it loosely scheduled for, I think, either the first or second work session in January.
Okay, you know, it might be good with our comms department, the outreach folks to just let folks.
Brianna.
Thank you.
Thank you. We got it.
You know, to kind of publicize that, I think it'd be good for, you know, the folks that have been watching this project for the last twenty years to know, like, hey, there's gonna be a good conversation amongst council, not among, it's not a community conversation. But hearing where we're at with this, hearing where we're at, you know, the ideas of a toll road, you know, I I see that toll road as not a money raiser at all, but you can't put enough speed humps to eliminate cut-through traffic. We've done that on Grand Ave or on Midland. If it was up to me, I'd put the toll road starting at exit one fourteen and help your neighborhood and everybody else. So how's that for a while? So I I think, you know, that conversation as as a council and kind of level setting, and I hope the reporters are here to report on that. I think will help the committee really tie together a twenty-year process and kind of level set where we're at. Because there's there's people that think they know what's been going on. And so much has changed from where a counselor might have been in two thousand and three to where this project is now that we really need to kind of level set everybody. And thank you for all the work you're doing. This is fantastic.
Thanks, Ryan. I appreciate it. We will just stay in touch on which which date we end up scheduling that work session. And then we'll reach out, we'll actually reach out to you directly, Merrill, just since you have been so engaged. And make sure that you see the agenda and that the work session, it is open to the public, but that it is closed to comments. But in the evening, once we do the update, as always, you're welcome to comment. So thank you.
Great. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ryan. Thanks so much. Okay, we are going to now move on to item number thirteen. This is Resolution twenty twenty four dash thirty seven, water and sewer rate change.
Good evening, council. Sorry, voice is coming in and out today. My bad. Matt Langworth, Public Works Director. We've been going over water rates and the whole entire system change from a flat rate across the board to rates, flat rates based off meters and tiers of water and volume usage based off meter size themselves. It's getting me rough.
Need some water?
No, it doesn't help any. Like I said, it just kind of comes and goes. So I thought I would give you two options. One, we can look at the resolution and the rates themselves. We can kind of go over that step by step so we can get a full understanding of it. I can take a step back. And we can do Brian's presentation from before, which kind of goes through why we ended up here and what it looks like for an average residential home. Basically, the short of it is we'll be increasing water rates ten percent and sewer rates twelve percent. But the average residential home will see a decrease by six point three percent. And if you use very little water, you could potentially And if you use very little water, you could potentially see up to a 25 or 30% rate savings. So it's it's taking the emphasis emphasis of all of these residential homes paying a bulk of the water and sewer fees and spreading it back across the system and saying, if you have a six inch water meter, you affect the system more than somebody that has a three quarter inch water meter. If you're a hotel and you're using water continuously all day versus a residential home is probably only using it in the morning and the afternoon, you have a larger, you have a larger impact to the system. Thus, the flat rates will actually be instead of $24, which is for a hotel or for a residential home on water or $83, which is for a hotel or for a residential home, it's flat across the board. If you have a big meter, you pay more for it based on the size of the meter, starting at $24.19 for three quarter. And by basis of how much larger it is and and size, that's basically it goes up based on that. And so are the tiers, though. So you're the hotels are not getting hit too hard with this because the tiers for residential will be zero to 7,000, from 7,000 to 14,000 and 14,000 and over. Zero to seven is normal use. Seven to 14 would be kind of the mediocre, maybe you're using a little bit too much water and anything over that would be kind of a punitive number. And the cost will increase as you hit those tiers. For a hotel with a six inch meter, that may be zero to 300,000. And 300,000 to 600,000, 600 and over, because they use a lot of water, but they're kind of getting hit on the front end with that flat rate being larger, which actually increases our 23% of our revenue right is right now is flat rates and it should be minimum of 30. And that is the minimum what it should be. And this new rate structure kind of gets us to that 30%. So all revenue coming in will not be 30% flat rates and 70% volume metric use. What we've talked about before is the hotels. The, I'm sorry, the multifamily gets hit a little bit more on that, but they've also kind of been getting a free ride at this moment. So each multifamily would be based off a meter. There'll be a fee for each unit and for the volumetric use. So they get hit a little bit more. Unfortunately, they kind of got drawn into this because of immigration use. The schools kind of get dragged into it a little bit. We think we can work with the schools and actually reduce their meter size and bring their financial hit down to a reasonable number just by changing the meter out because everything starts with the meter now. So residential homes will always be three quarter inch meters. And then we'll actually suggest to people coming in with like larger units. Say, you might want to talk to your plumber now instead of just saying arbitrarily, I need a two inch meter. When maybe they only need an inch and a quarter because now their rates are going to be based off the meter. So there'll be a little bit more time input from somebody developing or building to say, that is the meter size I actually need, not just I'm gonna oversize it because I can't. So how would you like to go about this slideshow? You want to go over the rates themselves? You want to just ask me questions?
Oh, yeah, I I think there's probably, I I think that we need to acknowledge that we have, we've talked about this. We've talked about it, I believe, at two work sessions and.
One evening session?
One evening session. So while I appreciate the opportunity to review the the information, I feel pretty comfortable. Like if someone asked me in City Market, the average meter size for a residential unit, I would write off, I'd be like, I know it. So thank you.
You'll also notice that we changed in the resolution, the actual exhibit that's attached to it, that we're setting rates for 2025, nothing else.
Yeah.
Because previously we were setting for 25 through 30. We don't want to do that because we want to fix meter size, read at the places we need to fix metering size and see what the revenue really is coming in from January through June, which will give us a slow time and fast time of the year, high volume, low volume. Give us an idea how to project out the rest of the year to see if we're really hitting the goals we needed to. And I also have Brian at Govrates reevaluating our five year capital plan. So I've broken it completely apart to this can be paid out of QA money, this can be paid, this needs to be paid out of capital money within the fund itself. And he looked at that. He's like, this is going to make a difference. So we're gonna do a whole entire rate study next year, which is just updating the one we did last time with capital funds coming from different locations. But we're also going to do an electric rate study because this is the last year of our last one we did with a suggested a 5.3% increase. Buy more information than you want, but you're gonna see lots of rate stuff probably every single year you sit on this board of this commission. Just so you understand.
Thank you. We appreciate it. I will, I'll bring it back to council for motion and or discussion. Councillor Schacter?
I'll be glad to make a motion. I just want to preface it again, as the mayor said, this is not a one off. We've been looking this, there's hours of study and in more layperson's terms. This accomplishes several things. Number one, it provides more equity and fairness among the users of our community, which has been overlooked. It emphasizes volumetric and use, which we should be measured and paid for and we're hoping to reduce. And nobody loves rate increases, but in general, we need revenue increases to cover the protection of our asset now and in the future. All that mixed together has been put together very nicely here. And so I would move regarding resolution 2024-37, water and the water and wastewater rate revision for 2025 that we, I move to pass that resolution.
And I would second that.
Great. So I have a motion and I have a second. I will see, are there any comments or questions? Otherwise, I'll call the question. Thank you. Matt, thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
We have results.
Yeah.
Yes, Councillor Zalinski. Yes, Mayor Wusso. No, Councillor Gottes. Yes, Mayor Protem Dem. Yes, Councillor Sims. Yes, Councillor Weimer. Yes, Councillor Schacter passes six one.
Thank you. Okay, great. Thank you. And and thank you. And in advance, I also thank everyone in the Vets Department and your department and everybody because this will prompt questions and phone calls. And thank you guys for for managing and navigating all this. I think to Sumner's point, this is a good next step and a good direction to go for all of the reasons he mentioned. However, change is always hard. So thank you in advance for your help on that.
You have a list of the people that are going to call us and we are going to start calling them tomorrow now that this is passed.
Correctly. Thank you. Okay, awesome. Great. So I will move into report from city manager. Sometimes we do council comments before report from city manager. Yeah, we do. Yeah, we do. Yeah. Did that get flip flopped? Usually we do it opposite. Doesn't matter.
Okay. Thank you. I I do have a couple of things. We added a couple of letters in correspondence that are thank yous for grants that we got, I think, from Lift Up in Colorado, Little Watershed. We're gonna do a little bit of a deep dive in a work session in January on the 1041 thing and the location and extent process. A couple of you guys have asked, so the 1041 thing is a little bit complicated. So we're gonna spend a little bit of time on that. In community development, we have got this new software that we're implementing. We have end user training next week, Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday. So they will actually be out here. They'll be here for those days and that's gonna be difficult. We're gonna, you know, our whole team is gonna be in, kind of learn how to use the system and testing it and stuff. So just be aware that we're doing our best to keep up over there, but that next week is gonna be kind of kind of hard. I hope everybody's coming to the holiday party next week. The thing with the holiday party next week is that we have a lot of RSVPs, yes. I mean, it's a very big group this week, sir, this year. So if we do this and we break up, you know, among council and we'll give Carl the bill and stuff. But one drink ticket for everybody, we're gonna be talking about a fair amount of money. I mean, everybody's gonna have to toss in somewhere between 225 and 250 bucks to do that just because we have so many people come, which is actually pretty cool.
Matt's like, wait a second.
Yeah. Well, actually Sarah had your back on that. She's like, well, should we make the new guy pay? I mean, he didn't make any of these promises. So.
No, and so just a little background for those in the community, we have a holiday party, but it, you know, we do not use tax dollars to pay for alcohol at our holiday party. Rather, it's been a contribution that city councillors have contributed from their own private funds for years and Carl Hanlon's firm, Carbon New Hanlon. So between the two, we cover that so that no city funds go to that.
Okay, um, let's see, a couple of other things. We did make an offer for a deputy police chief and for a public safety chief. Both of those were accepted. So we are very happy to say that Joe Daris is going to be chief of public safety and John Hassel is going to be our deputy police chief. We'll get something out this evening or first thing tomorrow to the rest of our staff. Our senior team already kind of knows and then we'll put something out and we'll talk to the paper and they'll probably want to do a little story, but.
Can we do a little congratulations? Congratulations and we're really happy to have you in the position, which you've been doing so fantastically for a while now.
Thank you.
Yeah, well deserved. Congratulations in both accounts.
That you're willing to take it. So thank you.
So, okay, the last thing, I've known about this for a little while and I've been so anxious to tell you guys about this because it's pretty cool. Brianna has been in a fellowship with something called the Betcher Foundation. It's a leadership development thing. They've been doing it for a long time and they're good at it. And if you graduate, you make it through, you're eligible to apply for a scholarship. And Brianna applied for the scholarship and was actually awarded this scholarship. So this is kind of all expenses paid, room board, the whole thing. They take him to Los Angeles and it's about a six week program. It's. It's a once in a lifetime sort of thing, right? So we've been trying to figure out, okay, how do we get her covered and get her duties covered and stuff? When she gets through it, she's gonna come back smarter and she's gonna be able to help us even more than she does right now. But that is gonna take place kind of starting at the end of kind of the back half of January and then she'll be back in the first couple of weeks in March.
Nicely timed. You're gonna miss the winter here and you'll be in a warm place. Well done.
Yeah, so it's a good time of year to do this and, you know, it's kind of a slow time of year. We're not in the middle of construction. But it's it's kind of a big deal to get this award and it's many thousands of dollars that these guys are putting up. So Brianna, I can't tell you how proud we are of you. Congratulations. And I think.
Patient for you when you get done. Okay. That's, we're fortunate to have you and and obviously they recognized your talent as well. So thank you so much for all that you do for our community.
Okay, I think that's it for me. Thank you, guys.
Awesome. Thank you.
Because he can't talk and because it's bad news, I get to deliver it for Matt. We were just talking about this. So the only thing we, as you know, we were participating in a challenge to Excel's line construction. We lost. We kind of figured that might be the case. But unfortunately, that means probably a rate increase to the city per transmission cost of about $200,000 a year. So we can anticipate that we're going to see probably about a 5.3% increase in electric rates as a result of that. This is one of those things that is incredibly frustrating. This is a power line that is being power pathway projects being put in to serve the front range exclusively. But we as transmission customers just got told that, no, really, it'll somehow benefit you. So you are paying for that as well. But so anyway, that's that's my update. I.
Matt's got his hand up and I have a Jolly Rancher for him if he needs one at the end.
I had a way better update than you did.
Like I just got the text update, like, oh, by the way, you need to tell them.
Well, I thought somebody should tell them. I thought it would load it on you. So this is the first of potentially four or five of these. So we talked about this previously. They're basically gonna double our transmission rates from $1 million a year to $2 million a year, potentially more. They're talking about a fifth year. So this is definitely financially impactful to us. We were going to do a 5.3% increase this year anyhow because of electric costs have gone up slightly and we knew this, if we lost this, that this was going to happen. So we've already kind of covered it with what we had already planned. But now we need to figure out, where do we go from here? So we've lost the first part of the lawsuit. We're probably gonna stay in it. We'll see how it goes from here on out, but I would anticipate, like we told you four years ago when this started happening, it will be basically a 100% increase on our transmission rates. So we pay $10 million a year right now for power. That includes transmission rates, FCR, see everything else. So that is a 10% increase just straight across the board that we have to pay.
You know, we should.
And everybody else does too. This isn't just City of Glenwood Springs.
Yes.
It's Aspen Center and Glenwood are being affected by this. And then everybody in the front range, anybody that hooks to transmission power for Excel.
We should talk to Dana from Dola because he told us when he was here for that workshop that he would help us with all of our problems.
I like that idea.
He did. He said that.
He did say that. We should call him up, get him over here for some lunch and see how he can solve. I've got a whole list.
Like, I'm serious. Like that's that we talk about, you know, the financial ramifications for our community members and equity. And and this is, this is pretty hard hitting.
It it is. And it goes to, you know, and I mean, I, as as I think about it, it's one of those things that, you know, conversation with the governor's office, I think is appropriate. When we think about how do we make resilient communities that are sustainable and affordable? Having a, you know, a private company, utility company that is able to impose those kinds of increases for really what is a speculative project at this point on the front range for the benefit of the front range is absolutely brutal for mountain communities, just absolutely brutal.
So why don't I, I rarely make motions. I think I know how, but I'd like to make a motion that we prepare a letter, ask you guys to help on our behalf that we send to the governor's office on behalf of council that just says that that is a brief overview of how impactful this is to mountain communities and see if there's anywhere, any way that he can intercede. So I'll make that motion and maybe Erin will second it.
Yeah, I would like to second that motion.
Yeah. So all those in favor? Okay, great.
Is there a way?
You need to put on your mic, please. Thank you.
Is there a way to, once that letter's drafted, to create a public version of it so our community knows what's going on?
No, I, you know, absolutely. I think that, I mean, it's one of those things, this is the one we've been kind of fighting in the background for the last four years on this. And it's the kind of thing that doesn't get a lot of, because it's a regulatory agency making the decisions. It doesn't get a lot of press play. There's been a little bit in the the Colorado Sun. But yeah, I mean, I think it's one of those things that we take an approach a little bit like we did originally on the mine, right? These are hugely impactful to us. We just need to be aggressive.
Let everybody know.
And let everybody know. And maybe I I do know that our Taylor Kramer with the Post Independent oftentimes listens to our meetings. So Taylor, if you're listening, we would happily provide any information in order for you to educate our community via a letter or an article. So thank you.
Yeah, and Meme would be happy to provide information. They've been sitting in all the meetings for us, actually provided counsel for us. Those kinds of fun things. It's not over at this moment, but it's definitely taken up a hit.
And maybe this is, since it's not over, maybe this is the time to really put some energy toward it. So thank you. Thank you, Matt.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, great. I am going to bring it back to council for council comments. We'll go ahead and begin. Anyone else or Shacter? Oh, anything. Yeah. But if you want to comment on that, go ahead.
I just want to say thank you guys for having the confidence in me to do this job and I really, really appreciate it and I'm really happy to be here.
Yeah, great. Thank you. We're happy to have you. Councillor Schacter?
Yeah, I would like to ask for support here on the dais, I think, for a potential agenda item and or workshop and not kick it down too far. You guys already know I'm interested in, from the top down, having a discussion to perhaps refocus on our housing priorities. And unbeknownst to me, there was a straw poll taken by staff at our housing commission that supported that virtually unanimously and.
Supported us?
Supported what I'm trying to encourage you to support with me. And also workforce housing brought it up. So I would like to have a discussion about why, and you guys think, I think, you know, I'm talking about the our mobile home parks and making that a priority. And I've got a variety of rationale and ways who can do it. And I think there's support at the community level, but I need it on the agenda. See if somebody's willing to have a hearing and we decide, yes, it is a priority or no, it's not.
Great. So Sumner, Councillor Schacter is throwing it out there. Is there someone who is in support of it? Councillor goes.
I just want to comment, I'm not in support of it at all. I think that we get recommendations that come up from our boards and commissions and I'd rather deal with that than than having this come down. So, yeah, I can't support that.
Okay.
But I don't want to have a conversation about it now because we're on the clock to be done.
I would still ask for support for the rationale and it did, there was a five zero straw poll that I didn't even know about.
Between staff or your commission members?
The commission staff asked the commission unsolicited by me.
Okay.
Do a straw poll and unanimously this. Do a straw poll and unanimously this rose to the top by all the members there.
And they said.
So I'm not afraid of doing this.
We want to hear from our council what their priorities are.
They said this is our top priority at this time.
What is? Yeah.
Looking at preserving mobile home parks in Glenwood. They don't have the means. I'm going to talk about us discussing the strategy to do that.
So what I just heard is not that you want council to look at council housing priorities, but rather. You want to have a council discussion on preserving mobile home parks.
And if council agrees to elevate that to one of our top housing priorities.
Got it. Thank you for the clarity. Okay, is there anyone in support of that? Counselor Depp?
Well, I thought I was, but um, I I understood that you want to talk about the housing strategies. As a whole, not just the mobile home park. If 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 you'd be willing to get a workshop together, a half hour, forty five, for all of it. I'd be interested in hearing what else is there that we're missing and maybe we do need to redirect our our our.
I have no problem taking the lead on that. I will, you know my bias. I will be emphasizing why the mobile home park should be a priority that we've missed. That doesn't preclude a lot of these other programs.
Well, I also think.
Present, I don't think it's presented to council.
But I think it should be, it should be part of a larger discussion instead of just the mobile home park. If if you're willing to do, to do a. A more globalist path, but a more um, community approach to it. Yeah.
Yes, you're saying kind of what he said initially is that your perspective to a. Larger holistic housing priority conversation.
Yes, I'd be glad to do that.
Then I would, then I would be in full support.
And are you willing to kind of revise it to support that? You're good? Okay, great. So what I just heard is that there is council support. And then also some may not want to engage. Um, Counselor Gottes, go ahead.
So this will be presented by you, Sumner, or will this be presented by the commission, by staff, who who?
I think initially. I will, staff is burdened. I I rely on them for some input and we will have some discussions, but I think the bulk of it. Will probably come from me. A perspective for us to consider in relation to our total housing approach.
I'm going to have our city manager jump in and and give thoughts on how we can move this forward and how staff and council. I, historically, we don't have a counselor lead a discussion of this nature because we have staff that does that. So I'm just kind of curious where we are and if, what are your thoughts?
I'll hand away and then I'll tell you what I think.
Um, uh. Hannah Klosman, Community Development Director.
Thank you.
And my apologies, I wasn't at that specific straw poll meeting, um, but I'm confident that that occurred. Commissioner Schacter and both of our housing related commissions have been talking about mobile home parks and preservation. It's on. The WAFAB's um, strategy priority list and I'm sure it's been uh, talked about with Housing Commission. Um, so I think staff and those commissions are more than happy to move forward some ideas. And I will defer a little bit on how we want that to happen. Staff can certainly take it back to them and and. Move those things forward. Look at the strategic operations plan for WAFAB specifically where they have that. As you know, we're rolling out um, programs right now. So we don't want to push those back, but fit in the mobile home park preservation strategies into it.
So I I think we should consider putting it on both of those commissions' agendas and talking it through and. Counselor Schacter can be there and then I think if they can get us kind of the pros and cons and that kind of stuff in maybe a letter or something. Or a very brief presentation, we can put it on the, maybe the second meeting in January as a work session. Does that work?
Right.
I'll be glad to work with you at both those commissions.
And and I I would say I do appreciate your concern over staff being burdened. We did just hire a housing manager, Kevin, and he's doing great things. So we have added some capacity in that regard. And we plan on fully utilizing his potential there, so.
And if I may add, what I'm looking at is not bam. Let's have staff implement a plan immediately. I'm actually looking at something that will not involve. Costs directly. It will be a revolving fund and also. Creating a priority that may help our entire city long term. In term, whether we're successful or not, but it's more a strategic option to say, if we prioritize this. And if we serve as agents, which we're legally able to do under legislation. And facilitators, well, partners, we may create a unique situation. And when I look at the report we just got from April. Every one of the bullets that they are talking about with that program. I would say is amplified multiple times if we can preserve any mobile home parks. And so I'll be glad to work with the commissions on our behalf and come back to you. Thank you.
Um, thank you.
I would just say, I think that is part of the overall, I mean, I think you've heard Hannah that this is, mobile homes are important to us as is. Everything else and we're doing everything and I don't think, I don't think you heard. We want to leap mobile homes to the very top and prioritize that to all the boards and commission. I don't think you heard that. Um. With that being said, respectfully, Hannah, uh, to my council comments for the evening, Hannah, congratulations, eight years of service to the city. Uh, we really appreciate those, those eight years. Bree, congratulations. Also as a Betcher Scholarship. Um, Hannah, for your eight years, we will absolutely give you everything you want. So, um, just ask.
That's one counselor's comment.
And yeah. As a reminder, that is not the voice of council. I saw that.
No, no, I'll work, I'll work with uh, the Housing Commission, the two C Commission to get everything that you want. I'll, I'll, I'll meet with you guys and I'll do that. I'll bring it back to council. Maybe I'll lead a session on that. Um, the other comment is, uh, I move for adjournment after you tell us where we're meeting.
How do you know that other people don't want to have a conversation still? Council comments. Yeah. Um, I'll think of something. Give me just a minute. No, actually, uh, Counselor Wymer.
I would like to wish a happy Festivus to those who practice.
Uh, I wouldn't uh, just proclaim that we're moving to uh, doc holidays, uh, our social event tonight.
Okay, great. I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
And I, and I second.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you all so much for attending. Thank you for staying till the end. Have a great night, all.
Leave me your card.